Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March 20th, 2023 regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us next to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Frank Marr.
In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you, Father, for all the good people who work in, live in Jersey villages, our citizens, city council, firefighters, police officers, public works, and all city employees. Let us pray for world peace. Let us pray for good weather from the west coast to the east coast, from the rains and the low temperatures that they're facing. Let us pray for our farmers to have a good crop this year, as spring will be here tomorrow, as today is the first day of spring. God bless America. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Amen.
Great. Thank you very much, Frank. We have no presentations today, so that brings us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. My name is James Fields. I'm candidate for mayor. I live at 16413 St. Hillier. The golf clubhouse, just for the record again, the golf course has never generated a profit. This information has been provided to city council many, many times. And we were told that it has been making money. It was profitable, and it wasn't. So honestly, it's always a best policy. Therefore, I recommend going back to the initial plan where we remodeled the current clubhouse for a million dollars, and wait till the golf course is profitable. The debt's going to be paid off soon. Why not wait? These are hard times. We're in a recession, and the leftover money should be refunded or returned to the citizens. The second topic I'd like to talk about, I know it's not on the agenda, is the Terrace Two project. When the first plans for development were provided to over fifty-plus developers, over fifty, not one was interested in the plan. I would like to know why is this the case? Not to hold the project back, but to find out why, so we can make progress in case the citizens want to go forward. Now the plans have changed, and my question is, will you contact the fifty vendors again and tell us the results? Will you also publish the fifty vendors or make it available easily for the citizens to know who you contacted? And another thing about the Terrace Two is, what are the negotiation points that have to be held in secrecy, i.e. not public, to the citizens? These funds are from the public. This is not a private entity. This is a public entity, and it impacts the citizens. The other one is conflict of interest. Any city council member involved in selling goods or services directly or indirectly to the city should abstain voting on any resolutions and/or negotiations on development. For example, selling the beer to the golf course through a contracted vendor, in my opinion, is a conflict and should not be allowed. Another one is citizens' involvement. Section 551.007 provides that, just what it says, provides that a governmental body to which this section applies shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during. It's not either, it's "or." So we should have the right to discuss this during the meeting. And what's puzzling here, we have a lot of citizens with experience and knowledge. Why not let them participate? Last but not least is signage. We have a double standard here. We have signs advertising for companies on city poles. Example is the frock. Those should be removed. Just as, prior to this, we had another citizen who had, and I admit, I understand what you're talking about, Councilwoman McCray, she had it in the city easement there, and I agree with you wholeheartedly there. But we need to practice what we preach, too. And we also have a sign that says "no alcohol" at the parks, yet the city permits alcohol for public events. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next card I have is from Mark Malloy.
My name's Mark Malloy. I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member for the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the regularly-held 032023 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I'm here tonight to talk about the non-voter-approved Jersey Village government-desired, and most likely tonight-forced-through-8,957,770-dollar golf course clubhouse and event center that all started with considering renovating the current golf course clubhouse for a cost of $800,000. So you, the Jersey Village government, went from $800,000 to now almost $9 million. Apparently, the citizens have been overtaxed for many years by the Jersey Village government to be able to accumulate this almost $9 million of money, and apparently, they have been overtaxed another $8.25 million for the Jersey Village government to have been able to purchase 33.9 acres of land in their, at that time, Jersey Village Crossing Development Scheme located on the south side of US 290. The Jersey Village government is going to come up with all kinds of excuses as to why the Jersey Village citizens are not allowed to make the decisions on these above-listed Jersey Village government wants. But the Jersey Village government will do a bond referendum for street reconstruction projects because they know that it is a sure bet that the citizens will very likely approve, you know, that type of a project. When the Jersey Village government decided to purchase the Jersey Meadows Golf Course back in the year 2000, they appointed a golf course advisory committee to determine if it was a viable self-sustaining operation that the Jersey Village citizens' taxpayers would not have to subsidize. The results the committee came up with was it would be self-sustaining. But that has not, that has proven to not be, you know, it's been proven to be extremely false. The citizens of Jersey Village have had to subsidize the purchase and the operation of the golf course to the tune of over $20 million since it was purchased. Now, the current Jersey Village government, tonight, is going to spend another very close to $9 million of the Jersey Village taxpayers' money on a never-ending taxpayer burden. The Jersey Village government will say, "But we built a berm around the golf course to prevent flooding." But in all actuality, the 122 acres could have been made to prevent many, many more Jersey Village properties from flooding if the berm had been built at the four-foot higher elevation that the recommendation determined that, you know, the recommendation determined that it needed to be built at, from the first engineering study. The main concern of the Jersey Village government is the Jersey Meadows Golf Course. If that is not correct, they would have floodwater that is coming from their village center on the south side of US 290, and the additional runoff from the expansion of US 290 that runs through the E127 Wall Street Channel pumped into the golf course land area. But no, that was not the objective. During a past February 2022, 2021 city council meeting, one of the council members said, "If we build the berm any higher, it will flood the clubhouse." That says it all. Now homes on the east side of Lakeview Drive on Jersey Street are required to be built six to eight feet above ground level. So, you know, that area could have been utilized to prevent a lot more flooding in the city, but you guys, you know, and the past councils have determined that, oh, no, we can't, you know, utilize the golf course to actually really be effective, because, oh, well, what's it going to do with how much damage it's going to cause to the golf course? And how long is it going to take for the golf course to be back in operations from the flood? So that's basically all I had to say tonight.
Thank you, Mark. The next card I have is from Jim Semack.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to speak, I came here to speak in favor of the citizens on Seattle Street, but I just wanted to say that I think that it's really a good idea of what y'all are doing with the clubhouse. I think it's a great idea. I don't even need to vote on it personally. It would be nice if we have a vote, you know, because I know a lot of people are upset about it. But I think it's the right thing to do. I would go full steam ahead with it. And I think it's a good move. I think if we wait, you know, two or three years, it's going to be twice as much. It's always better to do it right now, and to do it right. So I commend you for that. I commend you for your leadership. And now, getting to what I actually came to talk about. I didn't know that this was on the agenda tonight for the clubhouse, but since we've had street repairs on Seattle Street, we've had damage to the lawns from between the walkway and the street, you know, there's drain lines, and there's, well, the grass was damaged, of course, and sprinkler systems were damaged. And the contractor is saying that he wasn't, he doesn't have any instructions to fix that, and that instead, he's going to spray some kind of grass, liquid stuff. It's green, and it's supposed to grow the grass back, but really, it needs to be done with sod. Okay? So that's what I'm proposing tonight, you know, for your consideration. I'm not sure what, you know, we're just talking to the contractor. So maybe you guys already have plans to do something different. I don't know. But I'm here to bring that to your attention, and please give us consideration in fixing those items, because, you know, like someone said before, a lot of people are having tough right now, and we just, we love living here, and I really got the, I have the opinion that you're going to come through for us. So I'm pretty confident about it. So thank you for your leadership and support, and I hope we can count on you in fixing the grass and the sprinklers and the drains from, you know, some people have drains from the backyard all the way to the front, and it needs to go that way because it can't go the other way. So please keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The next card I have is from Thomas Heebner.
Just for my height, sorry. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tommy Heebner. I'm one of the five people that is applying for a position on Parks and Rec Committee. I just want to introduce myself. Some of you think, some of y'all know me, some of you don't. I am the son of Wayne and Cheryl Heebner, the brother of Kathy Heebner. And if it helps, I can disown them, or I can, I'm just kidding. I could not be more blessed to have them as my parents and my mom as my sister. They're the blessing of my life. If it would sway your vote, though, I have no problem.
Clearly your daddy's son.
I grew up in Jersey Village. I remember driving on my bike at 6:30 in the morning over to where ABC Children's Academy was to go work at Jersey Village Animal Hospital and help out the animals. I'm dating myself there because now we have this wonderful Jersey Village Animal Hospital over there. But yes, I did, was the guy that picked up the poop and take care of your dogs and did all that wonderful stuff. I can remember so many things that this, when I grew up, that this city gave to me as, from the Parks and Rec. I remember vividly during the summer that the tennis coach surely told my brother not to come back after day one, because we kept on killing the ball like we were going to slaughter it every time. I remember every summer, every day, going up to Carol Fox Park and loving the pool. I remember playing basketball on Clark Henry, which unfortunately, we can't do now. But, you know, when my wife and I, after we adopted our son about a year afterwards, we wanted to live in a city. We were kind of looking around, and we wanted a couple things to check off. One, one that was close to our grandparents, so he could be next to his grandparents and grow up around him. Two, a city that kind of felt like a small town, because my sister, my wife is from Galveston, because I sure as heck wasn't moving to Galveston. Not that I don't like Galveston, I love Galveston, but there ain't much room for construction cells in Galveston. Number three, we wanted something that had a big backyard. And number four, just something that had a great heartbeat that felt like small town. I didn't, had no clue. It was God's intervention. And then all of a sudden, December 23rd, 2/7, I'm living in the same exact floor model as my house that I grew up in, but flipped. I can't tell you how many times I've walked into the coat closet and tried to go upstairs and look like an idiot. But what can you do when you're dyslexic ag, you know? I would really, I've been, I was in the Army. I learned construction. I worked for many superintendents. I was a deputy grand knight. I would love for anything to be a part of the heartbeat that I see going on in this, this city. I put the sticker of City of Jersey Village not to try and get out of tickets. That's not my point. I'm proud of where we live. I'm proud of what I see going on here. I would love to be a part of any capacity of this city, and to be a part and show my son when later on and say, "Hey, you see that up there? Your dad was a part of that." And I would love to be a part of this legacy. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tommy. The next card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
Good evening. Rick Faircloth, 1601 Lakeview. I'm going to talk tonight to a little bit to support the gentleman that talked about the paving on Seattle. I live on Lakeview, and we had our street done twenty-plus years ago with one of the operations that, and during that time, our sprinkler systems were repaired by the contractor, and all of the drain lines that we had put in, like he was talking about, were replaced. And we didn't, and we had sod put back down. It was sod there when they started the construction and dug it up. Any other utility that goes and works in your yard, and there've been many that have come and worked in right-ofways, front gas lines, always put back exactly what was there before. So I don't know what contract information has been done. I don't have a dog in this hunt, but I think as a citizen of here of over 43 years, we need to make sure that what we did in the past, we need to make sure we do for the rest of the citizens going forward. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Rick. The last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 18th installment on Jersey Village history, to quote Dolly Parton's guest appearance on Designing Women, "It is the first day of the last decade of the entire 20th century, January 1st, 1990." This show, as well as the Carpenter's album Only Yesterday, were in the top 10, and Arnold Schwarzenegger wasn't just any kind of cop, he was a kindergarten cop. The leap into this last decade's first year was busy, as Jersey Village continued to grow in population, land usage, city programs, ordinances, and employees. City manager Nagel advised an estimated cost of $500,000 to construct Northern Senate Avenue as a bridge over White Oak Bayou. Councilman Finley wanted to pursue the city's right-of-way interest for Senate Avenue with Commissioner Squatty Lyons' office, which Mayor Ambrose advised a meeting was scheduled with the county. Resident Gary Brogdon requested to regulate the housing of racing pigeons, as they are considered a sport, and wished them to be included as a permissible pet in the newly-proposed animal control ordinance. The completion of sidewalks on the east side of Senate Avenue from Singapore to the pipeline easement was approved. Unanimous support for another Parade of Homes tour to be sponsored by resident and Realtor Mike Bruner was scheduled for May 5th and 6th. The highway department would extend the Esplanade on Senate Avenue to 290 from the Chevron Station. The recycling program proved an average reduction of 34.5% of the city's waste with resident participation. An eminent domain resolution was passed to proceed to acquire land needed for public use at 16529 Jersey. Approval was given to advertise for bids for ornamental streetlights along Jersey from 290 to the Lakeview-Rio Grande intersection, which later needed to be increased from five to six lighting poles. The city's participation in Harris County's Organized Crime and Narcotics Task Force was approved, which shortly led to a successful bust of $186,000, three vehicles, and three pistols, a portion of which would come back to the city after the county court processing a decision. Carol Fox was appointed as acting city manager from June to October until Deborah Andrews was approved and the oath of office was given by Mayor Ambrose. An inquiry was made to the highway department for city limit signs to be installed on 290. Fire chief Frank Marr reported on several updates such as the A&amp;M Fire School EMS graduations and recertifications for special skills, the computer-aided dispatch program to give vital information to en route first responders, and the rookie program participants will learn how to fight house fires practicing on five homes located in the floodplain with the Ponderosa Fire Department. A unanimous resolution was approved for opposition to the proposed Harris County Adult Probation Office to be located at 14655 Northwest Freeway near the southeast Gessner Intersection. The 1990 census final count showed 4,812 people living in Jersey Village. An ordinance was approved to set the speed limit as 45 along the 290 frontage roads and 55 in the main lanes, as requested by the Department of Highways. The city was awarded the Sci Fair Chamber of Commerce Beautification Award for the Senate Avenue improvements. At this point in time, Jersey Village was 34 years old, and today, our village is 67, with Founder's Day quickly approaching on Saturday, April 15th. There have been many changes over each timestamp since decades, and celebrating how Clark Henry changed his F&amp;M Jersey Ranch into our village is very important, not just on the uniqueness of our history, but also appreciating the challenges of forming, growing, and accepting our city government works to lead us into a bright future for new generations to live and thrive as villagers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. Those are all of the comment cards I have for this evening, which brings us to the city manager's report. Austin, please.
Mayor and councillors, the report's in front of you. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Any questions from council for the city manager?
Austin, can you give us a quick update on the Seattle project?
So right now, phases one, two, and three have been pretty much completed. Phases one, two are done. Phase three, I believe, is pretty well Phase three, I believe, is pretty well wrapped up. Phase four, concrete work should be scheduled, or is scheduled for within the next couple of weeks. So, do you anticipate that whole project to be wrapped up probably April or May at the latest, would be my guess, but weather dependent, of course?
And then, can we look into the concerns that were discussed this evening?
So, that would require a change order. Right now, it is called for hydro mulching for that. One of the problems with this project and sprinkler systems is that the street's a little bit wider than what the old one was, so that did cause some sprinkler systems to be capped, which is what was told to the residents at the open house meeting that we had back in, I believe it was August. So, we have been proactive in communicating that with the residents at that point in time. It is up on the website as well as to what the intentions were with that. There are going to be cast iron, or the plans do call for cast iron curb openings to be in all the curves where they had drainage coming out. But if council wants us to look at sod change orders and those types of things, we can do that, but that would certainly be change orders at this point.
I think when you say the cast iron curb things, does that include when people have their own essentially, like their own French drains or whatnot coming from their backyards that are what I would call required drainage?
Right. So, the cast iron curbs would be, would essentially replace all of the onesie-twosie PVC pipes that poke through the curb, so it's all a uniform to look for the whole street. We've done that, we did that as part of the Wall Street project as well.
Yeah, just, in piggybacking on these two, I think it's important that we don't necessarily break precedent, so if we have to meet as council to work with that, that we've done in the past, I know this is a little different situation. But also, I'm thinking of future street improvement projects, who want people to be excited that they're getting a better street, not lamenting construction and tearing up yards and things like that. So, I'm sure there's some way we could work with this if we can.
The only concern that I would have, or one of the concerns I would have with that is, you know, there are landscaping and things like that that's in the right-of-ways that had to get ripped up, that we don't want to replace all of that either. But if council wants to direct me to go out and do the change orders and make it happen, then I'll take that direction from council.
I don't know if, do we have something on the agenda directly related to this? I just want to make sure. If we do, then I'm more than happy for us to go for it in that direction, but...
Isn't the Seattle Street Project part of the city manager's report? Which makes it something that we could speak about?
So, just, um...
If you're asking for action, you can't take action on it, but just the discussion of what was raised in citizen comments and this relates to that.
Yeah, that was more my concern was giving, giving some sort of formal action to do something, but I think what we are allowed to discuss is whether or not something should be put on our future agenda for consideration for action to be taken. At least so far from what I'm hearing, hearing from council is that there is a desire to put an agenda item on a future, probably the soonest we could, but on a meeting to look at a change order to ensure that we're providing for citizens on this project similar steps to recover and to put it back into place as it was before. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, if you're digging up somebody's sod, you need it to be replaced with sod versus that goo stuff that does not work.
I agree.
So, Austin, I think if we could on the next agenda, however soon it needs to be in order to make it happen, if we have to call a special meeting in order to make that happen, then I'm open for that.
So, what he's asking, which is fine, is that usually, and I'll have to look at the contract, but usually you got a 25% allowance inside most all contracts for the change order type things. And so, if that's part of what you've already approved, and I don't have that contract in front of me, but if you have that, then it could be something already built in and we don't even need to take any action on that. It's just part of the project. But if it's something that's going to exceed more than likely that 25% amount, then that's going to be some council action, so.
No, the change order, I mean, there is an allowance for change orders as part of the contract. It's more just the direction from council if that's what they want to see done, was my question.
Yeah, that's where I was going to explain my head shaking there is I don't really feel like we needed a whole agenda item. I think this can be handled with the feedback we have here.
The only, I mean, it's going to be within the contract, because sometime, if that's out of the scope of what could be inside the change order, that's going to be pretty specific, so we just got to make sure that we're okay there.
So, yeah, to make clear, I think it sounds like from council, if what has already been approved as the contract will enable us to be able to make these things happen, it sounds like the will of council is to move forward with that. If there's a need to make any additional revisions that are not already contemplated in the contract, that would be something that I think everyone would be absolutely okay with having that put on the agenda.
Sounds good.
I know it sounds very pedantic, folks, but unfortunately, that's just, those are the constraints that we work under. Any other questions for the city manager regarding his report? Okay. If not, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Are there, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda?
I would like to remove F5, please, the short-term rental update.
Okay, F5 will be considered during the regular agenda.
And F, I'd like to remove F3 regarding the amending the general budget fund.
Okay, F3 will be considered in the regular agenda as well. Any other items that members of council wish to remove? Okay, if, so we have F3 and F5 coming off of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval of the modified consent agenda?
I'll move to, to approve the modified consent agenda minus F3 and F5.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The modified consent agenda passes. So, we will consider at the top of the regular agenda, the item F3, consider ordinance number 2023-06, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $10,000 by increasing line item 01213505, crime prevention supplies, and decreasing line item 01213001 salaries by $5,000, and decreasing line item 01213055, health insurance by $5,000, to cover the purchase of a pod camera from Security Lines US that will be placed at Clark Henry Park. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, council. This agenda item was to amend the budget to purchase the camera due to increase criminal activity at Clark Henry Park. Staff has been researching some security solutions and we feel we found a long-term solution for our parks, facilities, water plants, and so forth. This would be just for Clark Henry. Essentially, it's a satellite-based camera that has a SIM card involved, and it has 16 channels, 25 times zoom, and can record and store data for anywhere from 14 to six months based on the frame, frame rate that you're looking for. An important thing to note with this one is it can also be linked to the Flock cameras that we have around town, so if we ever were to expand to other facilities or intersections if we desire, that'll communicate directly with the Flock camera and the Flock camera system that the PD uses.
Okay, great, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item?
One administrative question is just, this is coming from the parks budget, not from PD, and just, does it have to do with how we're monitoring that, or is it just we had funds in park? And would this set a precedence for other parks and public works, security?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question, but you're asking if this is coming from the police department budget, the PD budget?
Well, I was just asking why was it parks and not, it fits in a park, right? But I was just, it's a security apparatus, so I wasn't sure if that would best come from PD.
Yeah, it is budgeted to crime prevention supplies, they're just decreasing. Yes, it is budgeted in PD, yes, I misunderstood the question, but yes, this is PD, it just happens to be in a park, so for crime prevention, yes.
Okay, well then, I completely blew over that, and I apologize.
I just wanted a clarification. You had mentioned that it has the capability of connecting with Flock. Does it, are we automatically going to have connection to Flock, or is that something that we will only access if needed? Because I'm a huge fan of the Flock system. I was just curious, is it automatically, and I don't know if that's better for you or...
There's a, this camera, so basically how it works is if it's placed next to a Flock camera, it'll be linked to it, and therefore, if you have a Flock hit, it will also register more than just the license plate. There is a small upgrade to connect those two per camera. It's very minimal, it's a one-time fee. This camera will not be connected to Flock, so won't be monitored, but it will have notifications to where, for example, if we wanted to put the pool after hours in a hot zone, it'll notify, which I'm assuming would be the CID department. It'll notify that, hey, someone's in the pool after hours, or someone's at the facility after hours, so it will have that capability.
Okay, and is the police department comfortable with that, or do you guys feel that it needs to, like, do we need to go ahead and have it connected with the Flock? I don't, I'll be honest, that's not my expertise, I just think it's interesting.
Yeah, so I know that the Flock cameras have really changed a lot of their technology since we first incorporated them. They've come a long way. They can pretty much be integrated now with a lot of IP cameras, and you can set up virtual gates utilizing them. They've got a new system called the Falcon System that's associated with Flock, and it utilizes any IP kind of camera to be able to do a, recognize, not only just recognize license plates, but also provide alerts if you have a virtual gate around something. It's not something that we would be opposed to doing, connecting the two together. I would just have to reach out to Flock and work through that connection portion of it right now, so.
But the bigger benefit that we would get by connecting these to Flock is where you have vehicles. Where this is going to go under the pavilion, you're not really going to have cars driving under there, or at least I hope we don't have cars driving under there. We'll have bigger issues if we do. So, the other, other places where we would put these types of cameras in the future, it would make more sense to connect those ones to Flock than connecting this one to Flock.
Well, it's good to know that that exists so that we can leverage existing technology with this, this purchase, so that's good to know.
I'm all for automation, but it didn't seem like there was a benefit there. Is the dispatch going to be able to live view these? Mark, okay.
Is any, will any of the cameras, I know it's, I'm assuming a lot of this is geared towards the bathroom over at the pavilion, which seems to be essentially be like the hotbed of excitement. Will any of the cameras be pointing towards the parking lot at Clark Henry?
So, it depends. There's 16 different channels, and you can structure the timeframes for when you want it to point at each, because of three cameras. One of them's fixed, so I'm assuming it'll be fixed centrally on the park. The other two can rotate based on the time of day. We run into some concerns with filming the pool during operation hours, so it'll probably not do that. But at night, yes, it can turn into, into the parking lot. The other one can also shoot almost, it'll be able to shoot to the beltway. So, you'll cover the whole park with this one pod. They do have the ability to expand if you ever needed to, to add two satellite cameras to connect to this pod if we needed more cameras at the park.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm moving that we approve ordinance 2023-06.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ordinance? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to the other item that was pulled from the consent agenda, F5. Consider ordinance number 2023-08, amending Chapter 18 Businesses of the Code of Ordances of the City of Jersey Village to add a new Article 6 entitled Short Term Rental Registration, adding rental operating requirements and providing an effective date. Austin Bleece, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, this ordinance here tonight adds on the ordinance that was adopted last month. It requires that the permit number to be advertised on the rental platforms and mediums, requires a noise and occupancy monitoring device to be installed on each floor and outdoor recreational areas, and it also limits the number of people that can be in the short-term rental at any one given time. So, this just, as it builds upon the ordinance from last month, and planning and zoning will continue, or we'll be meeting later this month, next week, I believe, to discuss the zoning ordinance piece of it that we talked about last month as well.
Okay, discussion from council on this ordinance.
I just want to take a moment to say, I do think we're moving in the right direction with this. I was, I think several of us were almost inundated with emails and contact from citizens that have short-term rentals next door to them, and one of them really just struck me because it's very obvious from reading the email that the home is being used for either some type of drug operation or human trafficking. I mean, it's just not anything at all what you want to live next door to. You know, when you buy a home in a single-family house or a single-family community, you don't expect that to be what you're, you know, what you're going to be living next door to. And I have to say that if it were me, I would put my house up for sale the next day, because there's no way I would allow my children to play outside if that's the kind of house that's going to be next door to me. It's just not safe. I just, more than anything, I wanted to discuss that I really hope planning and zoning takes this seriously. Other cities in the state of Texas have had really strong standpoints, or stands, taken stands against short-term rentals, and I think we need to do that. I think we need to realize that this is not something that we just need to let happen to us, and I don't want us to take a very, almost passive stance to it, to where we decide that because, you know, legislation in Austin may go against us, that we should choose not to act on it. I don't, that's, I'm not that kind of person, and I don't think that's what Jersey Village is about. And I just think it's something that we really need to make sure that we are doing our best to limit and control and keep it out of our neighborhood as much as possible. It's not, it's just not good.
Any further discussion on, any further discussion on this ordinance?
If I'm allowed, I was just going to see if we can get an update on where staff stood with some of the other things we had discussed in a previous meeting.
So, we're still looking at the fire code stuff and how to best do that. We're reaching out to other cities to see if anybody's come up with good ways to do it. Still looking at the other two things, was it only one of them might be covered here? The pool safety is one of them, so we're still, still looking at all that.
Is this an item that we could possibly get TML to wrap their arms around and get others, because we're not the only city that's having this issue? And maybe get a group of cities together to, to take it forward to the legislature?
So, I mean, I think that right now that there's one, I haven't been tracking it as closely as the mayor has, but there's one bill, I think, that's going forward that would be, it wouldn't be, I don't think it would override any, all cities, but it's a strong stance that Austin would take, more control over STRs than this. I know that TML is fully in support of cities' rights to control land use regulations and all that, and so I think they may be already doing that. So, it might be good for people, if you're really concerned about that, to contact your state rep and just make sure that it's noted that, you know, at least for that one bill, and again, I'm only cursory stuff about that one bill that's there, but it does seem to override a lot of city regulations, regulation ability. So, make sure that your state reps are notified of that, because that's, because I think the time for filing bills is done, so that one is going to be the one to watch, so.
Yeah, the bill that we've been keeping an eye on is House Bill 2665. The reason you haven't heard me talk specifically about it is because for anyone who watches the state legislature, there are many, many, many bills that are filed, and not nearly as many of those make it out of, many of those don't even make it to a hearing in front of a committee. This bill was filed fairly late. It just got assigned to a committee for the first time, I think, last week, and then I think just in the last couple of days, it was, I guess they erroneously assigned it to one committee and assigned it to another. There doesn't seem to be a particular urgency behind it, but I, I am keeping a hawk's eye on it, and if it looks like it even begins to get scheduled for hearings or anything of that sort, trust me, all of you will hear from me about it. So, yeah, we're keeping an eye on that. But I do agree that we, one of the things we've been doing to try to, to get ahead of, get ahead of this and try to get a good handle on what solutions may work best is by looking at what some of these other cities are doing. So, that is why this is kind of a, we're taking care of it bit by bit. Austin, one other question I do have, have we had any of these properties start the registration process?
I believe we've had to start the process. Nobody's completed it yet, but...
Okay. I think, I would imagine I speak for council when we say, hold their feet to the fire.
Yeah, after this one's passed, if it is passed tonight, definitely we'll be pushing it a lot harder on them.
Good deal.
Well, I was just going to say, we're fortunate enough to have Congressman Hunts representative with us this evening, so I hope you're listening to this and pleased to... with us this evening, so I hope you're listening to this and please take the short-term rental issue back to him. That would be great.
Yeah, it's a, unfortunately, that's probably not a federal issue. Well, probably fortunately. Let me rephrase that. Fortunately, it's not a federal issue. But, you know, if it becomes one at some point.
Just take it straight to the top.
Yeah.
Executive order, exactly.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move we pass ordinance 2023-08.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to our, the first item on our regular agenda. Consider resolution number 2023-10, appointing an alternate non-voting member to alternate position A3 on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the unexpired term ending September 30th, 2023. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, there is an opening on the Parks and Rec Committee. It's position A3. It's an alternate position. I did advertise for applications on the city website. Also, I contacted people who have previously shown an interest in this. I did receive some seven applications. They were included in your meeting packet, and we'll need to appoint somebody to fill the unexpired term of A3 from, that will end September 30, 2023.
Great, thank you. Discussion amongst council. I, I will just say right off the bat, I was very encouraged by the fact that we had as many applicants as we did, so.
Yeah, it's a popular one. I'll go ahead and start. I did take the liberty of interviewing all of the current people on Parks and Rec, all the committee members. And of all the 10, I got in touch with nine of them, and it was a pretty strong decision. Some of them all chose the same person, and that was Mr. Hubener who came and spoke today. So taking that into consideration, I know he's been at some meetings and expressed a lot of interest. And hearing his talk today about the heartbeat of JV, I really, I feel like that should be our tagline. We should utilize that, because that was adorable. But I do really take what the committee has to say into heart, and so I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we go with their recommendation.
I've always said that I put value in people that come up here and talk, and I'm not sure how anybody can top Mr. Schumer earlier. I, I hope you don't get comfortable in this, on this committee, and you consider sitting up here one day. So I would definitely second Mr. Schumer.
I was contacted by a, a committee member today who made the comment to me that it would be good to find a little more diversity for the group, seeing as how there seems to be a run on, you know, they always seem to be struggling to find volunteers, because I think a large portion of the committee comes from kind of the same group. And then, so, you know, when you continuously try to tap the same group for volunteers, you kind of run out of your resources. So I, I do think, I do agree with the, some of the comments I received about that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to place Tommy Hubener in position A3 for Parks and Rec and pass resolution 2023-08. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did you say 08?
Sorry, 10.
Any further discussion?
Do I need to resecond?
No, I think that's fine. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Tommy. Okay, that brings us to item G2. Consider resolution number 2023-11, approving the guaranteed maximum price for the new clubhouse at Jersey Meadow Golf Club, approving funds for the furniture fixtures and equipment for the new clubhouse, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Brookstone LP for the construction of a golf course clubhouse. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, council. This resolution regarding the GMP for the Jersey Meadow Golf Club clubhouse is being brought forth to be considered. I wanted to give a few updates since the last time this was on the agenda in December of 2022. Pertaining to the design, staff confirmed that it was the upgraded sanitary line that was the most effective and efficient option. We added that to the portion to the scope of work, which produced a budget estimate increase of $140,000. The drainage was reviewed and updated accordingly. Staff requested that the design team swap the red brick for the white limestone, Austin stone look to match the gateway entrance, the existing building, and the gateway on Jones in Jersey Meadow. And the construction documents were finalized at the end of January month and sent to Brookstone to formulate their GMP. During the GMP bid formulation, some issues were brought forward with, from contractors and subcontractors pertaining to how the renovation of the existing building was designed, pertaining to the roof, the canopy, and the entry portal. So staff went to work to identify some alternatives pertaining to the roof. The original plan was to place a new roof on top of the original roof, which is some, sorry, which has caused some concerns from the contractors, some structural concerns. Because of these concerns, the roof replacement was not placed in this GMP and still needs to be addressed. We identified two alternat, alternatives. One would be to cap the existing roof and place a new one on top with a preliminary cost estimate of $346,000. An alternate B would be to remove the existing metal roof and replace with like. It's the least expensive option and most feasible, and it has additional preliminary cost estimate of $103,000. As you guys may be aware, the canopy and entry portal is in bad shape. The canopy will more than likely need to be replaced along with the roof system when the roof is replaced. An additional alternate recommends to be widened entry portal while the canopy is taken down and repurchase, or reinstalled, sorry. That cost estimate is $213,000. Of course, both of these adjustments will need to be reviewed and confirmed by the structural engineer and design team. After that, Brookstone will need to gather some additional updates to formulate a firm GMP. So what we tasked them to do is come up with a rough estimate for the renovation portion, including these alternates. So what we did is we split the GMP into two documents to illustrate the cost of the new building and the preliminary cost of the renovation with these alternates included. The total construction cost for both projects projected at $7.9 million, which includes the final new building GMP included here today, $6,45,340, and the preliminary GMP for the renovation, including the recommended roof, canopy, and entry portal preliminary estimates at $1.8 million. FF and E costs are estimated at typically 10%, which is $791,000 overall, with more money being allocated to the new facility, given that it has zero furniture, and the event center is mostly just tables and chairs. Brings the total project, projected budget at $8.7 million, with an additional $180,000 to $200,000 in design costs that we didn't incur from the previous design. Tonight, council could take action on the new building, including furniture fixtures and equipment. The plan is to bring the final renovation GMP back to council as soon as practical, which would hopefully be April, for the renovation to firm up those preliminary estimates, including the roof and the canopy. And our recommended action would be to approve the resolution.
All right, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I did attend the golf course committee meeting on Monday, where we discussed some alternatives for the, the roof of the existing complex. Having been through something similar personally, I would recommend removing the old roof and replacing it with a new roof. It's, I mean, that's, you're going to run into a lot of issues if you, you know, if you don't start fresh there. And, and the existing roof has had years upon years upon years of leaking, so we just need to nip that in the bud from, from the get-go.
Also, I wanted to throw in too, I have Kennedy Columbo with FGM Architects if you have any design questions, and then Chris Hankins with Brookstone Construction if you have any questions pertaining to the GMP or the alternates that staff has recommended.
I will say, actually, it may be a good starting point and may kind of help to move the conversation along if, if the representatives from Brookstone wanted to come up and just give us a very brief overview. I know this was a challenging process right now, especially with, with the supply chain issues and pricing, but if y'all wanted to kind of just give us a, kind of an overview of what we're looking at here, kind of point out any, any details that you think are particularly important, and that would probably help.
Building B, which is the new clubhouse, we are confident in that number. That is a GMP. That number, as Robert mentioned, was the $6,45,340 for construction. Building A, and might add, Building B does include the site development around it, so that is included with Building B. That is not an additional cost that comes in Building A other than the landscaping that is associated with Building A. Building A, as mentioned again, the roof, there were some concerns relative to loading the roof with essentially a second roof, and had to do with the spacing of the purlins of the structure. So it is advisable to have a structural engineer come and review those purlin spacings to see if it is capable of handling another roof. That said, I think it is more advisable to take off the existing roof instead of trying to cap the new roof over the top of the existing and just replace it with a like roof to match in color the Building B roof that goes on.
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick clarifying question on that?
Sure.
So if we just, if we decided to go with the new roof version, does that also, will we still have the need to have the structural engineer back out?
I think it would be just advisable to look at it, but I don't anticipate any changes. It would be swapping a roof for the same type of roof. Whereas the capping of a roof essentially has two roofs on top of the structure, and somebody would need to verify that it could in fact handle, what is essentially, two roofs.
Thank you.
Welcome. In addition to the roof, the other item to look at is the, the canopy. Again, I think it was mentioned that the canopy is not in the best shape. There are some existing posts that have corroded, and those would have to be replaced. But given the structure, the canopy structure itself, it's an aluminum structure, it's questionable whether it could also handle an additional roof on top of it. And so, again, even in spite of just swapping out the existing roof for a like roof, I think it is advisable to have someone come and look at the condition of the existing canopy. Again, that said though, we have covered in the preliminary budget dollars to replace both a like-for-like roof as well as the canopy with a structure that can accommodate a like roof.
Any questions from council for Brookstone regarding this item?
Thank you.
I will say, this is the culmination of a very long, winding road to get here. You know, there, there's been mention about the fact that we started talking about a renovation of the existing clubhouse, and then this has gone on and on. And as everyone knows, costs have gone up quite a bit. I don't think they're coming down. And, and so, the, you know, hindsight being 2020, should we have moved on this earlier when it was cheaper? Yes. But, you know, a lot of decisions look a lot different when you have the benefit of being able to quote-unquote "see into the future." So it's, it's one of those things where now we have in front of us a, what looks like a, first of all, a very well-detailed estimate. The fact that it's a guaranteed maximum price, I think, provides us some assurance that maybe we, we did not have before we went this route. And that way, we know that when we approve this today, we have some certainty. And so, you know, the other important thing just that I'm, I'm going to point out is that this is not just about golf. If, and I know there are many, many people out there who know this, who have never picked up a golf club, who know this is not just about golf, because that golf course clubhouse has been used for years now as our de facto community center. It is a place where many community groups in the city meet on a regular basis. It is a place where many community events are held that have nothing to do with golf, other than the fact that it's the location of where those events are happening. You know, it, it is, it's an additional space that we have available for our citizens at a time where facility rentals are at an all-time high. We, we've gotten to the point where we were having difficulty with bookings here at the civic center. So we, we know that there's a demand. We know that our citizens have asked for places where they can hold events, where they can, you know, rent for parties or for group events or whatever the case may be. And I think this is a big part of that.
I have a quick question if you guys, and I'm not sure who this would be best directed to. In light of the conversation previously about the cameras and how this is essentially the current cameras that we just approved for Clark Henry, that those are going to be, that's kind of like the idea of where we're going with security cameras and things like that. Is that included to where whatever the security stuff included in this construction, is that going to fall along with the same stuff we have, so that we're not putting in something and then having to replace it, so that we're not being redundant in our costs?
Yeah, in terms of like surveillance and access control, our goal is to set the precedent and make sure that all of our technology transitions.
Okay, so just, yeah, okay, all right. So we're not going to be putting in something like the, you know, like the builder grade, and then we're going to have to take it out and put it on our, I just want to, like, it's, okay. At this point, if we're saving $100, I'd take it. I just want to, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion from council? If not, I would, I don't.
I don't have much to say, except it, it feels like we're, it feels like we're, yeah, after several steps back, we're now moving a step ahead from where this process started when I first joined council. So, you know, I, I was looking at construction costs today and per square foot, and then I was like, whoa, this is, this is not cheap. And then I added in, oh, well, this actually includes, includes a lot necessarily furniture, but furnishings and other things and that, not just raw construction. So when you add both per square foot prices, it's, it's in line with everything that, that's out there when you see national guidelines. And that gave me some comfort, not necessarily on not pulling the trigger several years ago, but that's hindsight, right? So I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to using the facility. And like, like Mayor Warren said, it's, it's not just for golf. That'll be a major feature of it, but hopefully it'll be a, get a lot of usage from non-golfers as well.
I'm excited about moving forward the project. I told Matt this the other day. I worked at the golf course in high school, which was over 25 years ago, and that building has not changed at all. It's been the exact same. So I'm looking forward to having, you know, something new, something fresh. I think it'll draw a lot more, I mean, we're doing a lot of, of, of business with our high schools and our, our high school teams, and it's, it's really great to see all of the young golfers coming through, and I think, you know, providing them a, a great space to not only play golf, but to socialize with their friends, I think will be a much-needed add to the community.
The packet is beautiful and very detailed and easy to understand and read. I know we've spoken about this many times, and I think we're all just, we're ready.
I don't think I need to make comments about where I stand. I move to approve resolution 2023-11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. It was a long time coming, but we got there. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with Councilmember McCray.
Only thing I really want to say tonight is that I've gotten several emails and conversations with different people that have been involved, different stuff about the, some of the vandalism going on at some of the parks, to people with the short-term rentals that live next door to them, and several people have made the exact comment about, "I didn't want to call the police because I don't want to be that person. I don't want to report this because I don't want to be that person." And the problem is, is if everybody decides not to be that person, then A, we have no, we have no numbers, we have no statistics, and B, the problems just continue. They're just going to continue if you're not that person. So, I'm asking everybody to take a moment to be that person. Make the phone call, say what you got to say, it doesn't matter. I mean, I made the phone call, I made a phone call to the police last week on behalf of an 11-year-old boy that saw kids at the park doing stuff they weren't supposed to do. You can be that person, it's okay. And you know what? It wasn't scary. Nobody blasted me for being, you know, a Karen. It was fine. So, you can do it. You've got to speak up. If you see something, say something. That is, it goes for so many things, and we all have to be neighbors, we all have to be citizens, we all have to be involved. So, it's very important, and I'm done.
Hope that everybody had a good spring break and getting back into the groove of things. I would echo, I didn't know Jennifer was going to talk about that, but I had somebody call me in this month with something they were, they didn't want to call the police. So, they called and asked me, "What do you think you should do?" And I was like, "I think you should hang up and call 911, because they're probably going to run lights and sirens to that." If you don't want to call 911, get to know the JV's 10-digit phone number. Call the non-emergency line. But, if your neighbor's dog is barking, you don't like it, be a good neighbor, go over and talk to him. But if you see something in the park that you're concerned about, it's reasonable to call the dispatch center and say, "Hey, I'm concerned about this," and somebody will go check it out. It may not even be an officer. They might refer it over to Public Works or somebody else. But it's, if you see something, say something.
Councilmember Watson?
Ditto on that. Somebody had mentioned, "Contact the state rep." You, I believe, will have the opportunity to do that. She will be in town, I believe, or representatives from her office will be in town, and she will too, discussing property taxes at Senate Avenue Brewery with some representatives from the Harris County Appraisal District at 6 o'clock on Thursday. So, you know, if you have things like short-term rental discussion and you want to grab her ear, she might direct you to staff or say, "Hey, can you write me about this?" But at least you've got her ear at the time. And I love the fact that we had to make decisions concerning seven people applying for a position on the Parks and Rec Committee. That, that's a dream versus defaulting to someone. I'm sorry we only had one space for seven people, but that's a great thing to see, that people want to be involved, and I think Robert and the Parks and Rec Committee would love for people to volunteer, even if they're not committee members, if those are, there are opportunities at Founder's Day or other events. I don't want to speak for them, but I think the more volunteers we have, the better off. Founder's Day is before the next council meeting, on April 15th, and Easter is the weekend before. So, happy Easter, everyone.
Councilmember Shepherd?
You stole my thunder, because I was going to remind everyone about Founder's Day. Tickets are already on sale, right? So, you can, can go look for that. I think there's a chili cook-off that, if you want to get involved in that. So, it was definitely a lot of fun last year, and I know we've made some, some changes and improvements for this year, so looking forward to seeing everyone out there.
Man, I've got nothing now. Same thing, Founder's Day, April 15th, the event at the brewery with Lacy Hall, if you'd like to meet her. She's a lovely woman, you'll like her a whole lot. And I really have nothing else to say. Happy Easter coming up. I'm tired of this cold weather.
Well, if you think your thunder's been stolen, imagine every meeting, my thunder's stolen by the time it gets to me. No, I, I think all of these are excellent points. You know, every once in a while, you'll hear someone, kind of to piggyback off of what Councilmember McCray said, every once in a while, you hear someone say, "Well, you know, the city ought to have somebody looking at this all the time. They ought to know that it's there. Why do I have to call?" And I'm not saying everyone does that, but I, you know, I'm sure everyone has at some point heard or seen something along those lines, and, and I think it's always a good reminder that as much as we and the city staff and everyone else tries to keep an eye on everything at once and tries to ensure that, that any issues that arise or identified and taken care of, that, that our city belongs to all of us, and, and taking care of it is a shared responsibility. We only have so many sets of eyes, but if all citizens are out there looking and saying, "I noticed this issue," or "I noticed this problem," or "This looks suspicious," if you speak up and let us know, whether it's the police department, or whether it's Public Works, or whatever the case may be, that is a crucial first step for us to be able to solve the problem. So, I definitely encourage you to, to be a part of helping us identify and, and begin the process of solving any issues you might see. In addition, I also wanted to recognize, I think there was some mention during a prior conversation, Grayson Hillburn, he is the field representative from Congressman Wesley Hunt's office, if you want to just raise your hand, Grayson. Just wanted to introduce him. He came and introduced himself to council before the meeting and, and offered, of course, the council congressman's help if, if any issues came up, which, as we all know, especially when it comes to flood mitigation, we'll definitely be reaching out. So, just wanted to introduce him, and so that y'all are aware that our congressman's got, is looking out to see what's going on in Jersey Village. So, that... So, with that, we are going to move into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:12 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney in Connection with the Following Item. One pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village, TERS Number 2, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. And Number 2 pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate the potential and possible sale, exchange, or value of real property located within TERS 3. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. the closed session deliberations are concluded. All right, the closed session was adjourned at 8:36 PM, and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. That brings us to reconvening the regular session and discuss and take appropriate action regarding items discussed in closed session regarding the potential and possible sale, exchange, or value of real property located within TERS number three. Austin Blyce.
Mayor Councilors, we have the resolution before you as discussing executive session.
I move that we approve the resolution to sell the property at 15522 Jersey Drive. Back to the original order.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.